Page nine. Page ten.
I have a couple of comments on that one. The one. On the right column of page ten. At halfway down through that paragraph, there's a. A parenthetical ending with increasing. Next sentence begins anecdotal and it should be a period after the parentheses. Before the anecdotal. Follow me, you with me?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Anything else? I had some, some stuff on that too. On that, on that same paragraph on page ten. At the very top of the right hand, this second line. It is believed there are approximately. Can't we just drop the it is believed and just say there are approximately? We don't say it's believed by here.
For that the steering committee provided. Based on like, I don't know. I don't know if anyone on the steering committee wants to speak to how that number was developed.
I'm not talking about the number, I'm talking about it is.
No, I know, and we chose to say it is believed because. That number, I don't really even know what that number is based off of. So if you guys are comfortable that we can take out it is believed and just capitalize. Okay.
Um, and then. You know, last sentence counting up. One, two, three, four, five, six, six lines from the bottom. In a small town can cause strains or not saying. I thought sure damn is going to say. We don't have Mason here either. Um, eleven. Page eleven. About. Uh, changing the, the word strain. In the sixth, fifth line from the one, two, three, four, six lines from the bottom. Make. To strains plural. Yeah. Okay, are we zooming yet? Just so we know, Josh. Okay, right. Okay, on page eleven, any comments?
On this, Mr. Chairman, on this. Second column under housing. Uh, I guess the fifth line down, the par sentence begins home values. Are rising slower in Montreat. Than the county and state, I would suggest changing the home values are rising more slowly in Montreat. Then in, and insert word in. The change slower to more slowly. Insert in between Dan and the county and state.
Okay, um, on the charts. I had a hard time initially, just where does that five point nine percent come from? So I divided thirty. Or I subtracted thirty-two thousand from thirty-four thousand and then divided the result thirty-two. That's where the five point nine percent comes from. So that is a real number. So I don't think we need to. Just say anything. Well, we don't say what the. Maybe you could draw an arrow between those two columns. That's no big deal.
So, so what do you guys want to do on that, on that graph?
I don't have a strong feeling. Just leave it like this.
Now, okay, sorry. And the bottom of the first column on page ten. And it says Montreat's full-time population has been steadily increasing since two thousand and ten and then references the figure below, but in fact. The population declined from two thousand and ten to two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve, so it really looks graphically like it's more like. It's been increasing since two thousand and thirteen, just to be technically accurate.
All right, so do you guys want to change that?
That's a good. Thank you. Um, on page eleven, the chart on the right. Um, Kayla, just was hard to delineate the different colors. If those could be changed or made brighter and so it's just hard to tell. Page twelve, anything?
Mr. Chairman, uh. I don't know if it's critically important and this is just a question or comment suggestion. But. The legend says that purple is full-time residents. And if I'm reading the graph, the chart correctly, the map. The unimproved property owned by the conference center is listed, is shown in that color. I don't know if unimproved property can be delineated from improved property, but it seems misleading to glance at this map and think those are all full-time. Residences, which is what this. Graph is showing. And yet it includes unless, just looking up on Oklahoma area. It appears that all those unimproved lots. Are. Full-time residents as opposed to part-time residents, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it's kind of misleading. In that respect.
Kayla will make an appropriate adjustment with the consultants.
I will ask them if they can. So the way that they did this was they looked at the. Um, owner's address and the property's address, and if they were the same, then that's what they considered full-time. Um, and so if it's an undeveloped lot, it doesn't have an address. Um, so I can see if they're able to identify those that are just. I'll, I'll see what they can do. It may come down to these maps just being removed because they're misleading. Cause we ideally do a, a, a property inventory or anything.
I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, ideally, I mean, we're trying to show residents, it seems if we're showing full-time residents, it should be. There should be a house on the property for, for there to be a full-time resident. I, I pointed out the. Conference Center's property, but other unimproved lots are falling in that same category if we're trying to show residents. Correct, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if there's some way to, ideally, we'd have a separate category, unimproved property. And then rest would fall in.
Well, and it, it, it may come down to just removing this map and just relying on the text and, and the previous figure.
Okay.
I can, I can ask what they want to do. And in your, and in the revision, it will be either delineate improved, unimproved, and then from that, what is full-time and part-time? And if not, then just remove the maps. Yeah.
Y'all okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, page thirteen. Uh, page fourteen.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't, this is just a comment, I don't think there's anything to do. Done to change it because on page fourteen, which is explained a little bit on page seventeen. I had a question about bike suitable roads and what determined that because it looks like the only bike suitable roads that this map is showing in Montreat is. Uh.
You're talking about on page fourteen?
Yeah, fourteen.
Okay.
The map, it's showing the green property is bike suitable road. It's showing, I guess, I think it's Virginia, West Virginia going across. It also shows, uh, Assembly Drive, which is partially hidden by the other colors. I don't know what determines that or whether it's critically important. I do know when you get over to page seventeen. Uh. It says on the, since they're tied together, excuse me, jumping ahead. But in the left column, down at the last part of recreational uses, it says the bike civil roads identified. By land of Sky Regional Council of Virginia Road in West Virginia. When we get to page seventeen, I would suggest an add an assembly drive. But my point is, it appears that this is based on what land of Sky Regional Council determined, is that? Correct?
So my understanding was it came out of a Buncombe County report. Not land of Sky. I asked the consultants what that bike suitability meant, what it was based on, and they could not provide me an answer to that. So I don't. I don't really, I don't have an answer.
It's just, you know, I, I think about Virginia and West Virginia, if anything, it might be unsuitable and biking being so narrow and curvy and so forth. And while we're saying it's bike suitable and one of only two roads in the town that is bike suitable, I just. Question if that's accurate, if it's necessary.
I mean, we can, we can, you guys can make a recommendation to just remove that piece of the data set because it's, it's. In question, we can certainly make that request. Um, like I said, I asked them, they could not provide me an answer.
Well, bike suitable, you can ride your bike. A lot of.
I, I don't know.
Well, I, the map, I mean, my personal feeling is a map's probably helpful to someone. Maybe just delete the part about bike suitable roads.
I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what that. Bike suitability means, I don't know.
I don't either.
Where that came from. I asked for clarification from the consultants and they, they said that they didn't know. Um, and I. We can take it out. I mean, like I said, I, I don't, I don't know.
Do you, do you think, Kayla, that maybe this was put in there as response to? Survey?
It came, it came out of some plan. It came out of some data set, some plan. And I was not given a reference to what that plan was when I asked where it came from.
Maybe the thing to do is to have you further check it out. And then, uh, as it gets to the council, maybe you could explain that more to them.
So, yeah, why don't?
If it, go ahead and like, well, I think Montreat's bike friendly.
Yeah.
And, and people can make good decisions on, and we have a lane and, but. I live on Virginia and there's families, people that drive, go by all the time. Is there any way we could just?
Like I said, this.
Bike friendly?
This, so that's two pieces.
Some degree.
So number one, this bike suitability. So just so you guys know, these maps are made with a software called GIS. And what it is, is you, it's basically a, a mapping software. And so you take data and plug it into. The software and it spits out an image. So you can look at things and their spatial relationships. So. And this is just speaking generally about GIS. I didn't make these maps. I don't know where these, this data came from. You know, um, speaking generally, this data came from somewhere, this bike suitable road, this path that was identified came from somewhere. I don't know what planet came from. I don't know what bike suitability means in this context. And I was not given a response. So what we can do is. I can inquire again for additional clarification. And if I don't receive additional clarification, we can just have this piece of data removed and make a general statement about the, the, the bikability.
Many roads in Montreat are.
Right, right. So, so if that's an option that, that the, the board members are okay with, I mean, that's really. All I have right now, I don't have any other information.
Well, when you say you did, remove that data, are you saying remove the whole map?
No, 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 you can, you can, in this software, you can just take out like a legend item and remove that specific.
Suitability road.
Yeah, so we could leave the rest and take that piece out.
Oh, happy with that?
Yeah. So do we want to just then just strike it?
Well, I think it'd be interesting to see where that information came from, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I can ask again, like I said, the response I got the first time was. It came out of something from Buncombe County and they didn't have any other information, so.
But I think you ought to put quotes around bike suitable and then just say many roads.
Well, why don't I see if there is, because like I said, if this came out of a plan, this was just generally speaking. When you have data sets like this, when you're making a comment about suitability or something like that, that's based on some sort of analysis. Um. It's not just something that's like arbitrarily said. So I think if, if I can't get information on what exactly the criteria for suitability in this context was made. Then we'll just take this. Piece of the map off and then. When, and then in this, um, page seventeen, uh, paragraph on the left. That sentence that Dan had comment on, um, we can just, uh. Change that to something that's a little bit more general, like Montreat is generally bike suitable.
Yeah, that's good.
And just. And bike friendly, yeah. And bike friendly.
Bike. Yeah, so let me just, hey, let me write all that down, just give me.
We'll give you.
Yeah. Okay, so on page seventeen, if. Clarification cannot be provided on what exactly that means, we'll change that last sentence to, um. Montreat is generally bike suitable and bike friendly, bike, bike suitable and bike friendly.
Can you interpret that? So once you get out. The other area, mountain bike road there. So. I think. Montreat.
Yeah, within, within the municipal, the, the roads within the municipal boundary of Montreat are generally considered to be bike suitable and bike.
That's.
Good point. Hang on, let me write that. Montreat. On. Generally considered. To be bike suitable and bike friendly. Okay.
Okay, anything else on seventeen?
I, I had a question, uh, Mr. Chairman, in that same paragraph, but up at the beginning. Recreation uses as conservable and maybe used low impact recreational purposes, then it says high value recreational uses. Provide high quality experience. I'm just not sure I understand what high value recreational uses.
Page seventeen.
I got you.
The second sentence, second sentence starts high value recreational uses for, so help me understand what that means. High value recreational uses.
I'm sure the committee knows what, why they put that in there.
We could say valuable recreational uses such as the trail system provide high quality experiences.
Well.
Okay, that's a good suggestion. Take high value out, okay with that?
That's. Right?
Yep.
Uh, on the, uh. High chart. Institution. And red back down. Or it's broken down seventy percent of RA, three percent of. That's nearly true, however, there are about three or four other. Institutions where they've got their institutional units, including Christchurch. Uh, Billy Brand Association, William Black, and.
Yeah, too.
Okay.
Control that, that line, uh.
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, just on the second column, um, as I mentioned before about the terminology, it's in the first paragraph at the end. The zoning code permits commercial uses as defined in the MZO. Should we? Put in parentheses. What that stands for?
So it's listed on the.
Did I miss it?
Yeah.
Somewhere.
Sixteen. Last sentence. Page sixteen.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Making call.
Um, I had a question on the chart also. It was confusing to me.
Which, which chart?
The chart there on the left, two point nine.
The, oh, the pie chart, yeah.
Where this, the bottom block is coming from. Um. Is that applying both to institutional and?
That's what, that's what it appears to be doing. That's what it appears to be doing.
So I assume that is what it is. Okay. Okay, page eighteen. Page nineteen. Page twenty. Page twenty-one. Page twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, in the, uh. Right-hand column next to the last line.
This is page twenty-two?
Page twenty-two.
Okay.
Right-hand column up at the top. Flatness, next to the last line, EJT should be ETJ.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. He saved me a lot of time. Good is the right word, Byron. Good. He is very good. Good job.
Uh, good, good, good.
Thank you for that.
Okay, page. Uh, twenty-three. Any questions? Okay, page twenty-four. Page twenty-five.
This is, uh, something I hesitate to mention, but I'll have a little fun with it, hopefully. The second sentence in the environment. Reads, the natural beauty of the area has been admired and appreciated by Montreat residents and visitors. Since the valley's conception. And I guess. And I'm trying to figure out when this valley was conceived, I suppose, uh. In the mind of God, it was.
Inception would be better than. Who, who was doing the conceding?
Good Lord.
Are y'all happy with changing that to inception?
Yeah.
You got that, Kayla?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um.
I was just gonna say for many years, uh. The centuries.
Okay, that, uh, on, set the, set the first line of the next paragraph, if extreme weather patterns. Continue to worsen, climate change. Um. I would suggest we say May rather than will. Maybe a potential threat to the health of the park. And. Page twenty-six.
This is, uh, the second. Uh, well, the third line. The bottom. After the word.
Okay. Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was catching up. I'm still trying to debate, discuss. Yours, your, well, I, I, no, I was beyond the inception, conception paragraph. So on, you were suggesting on the page twenty-five, I'm sorry. In that first paragraph, sec, uh, the second paragraph.
Yeah.
If extreme weather patterns continue to worsen, climate change may.
Yeah.
Change will may.
Yeah.
Well, I guess if extreme. Weather patterns do continue. There will be a potential threat. If. Patterns continue, there will be.
What now? You lost me.
Well.
Dan's on page twenty-five.
It begins, if extreme weather patterns continue to worsen.
Alright.
And it would seem if they do continue to worsen, there will be a potential threat. But you're suggesting May.
Yep.
Please.
So are you saying we should just take out the words climate change?
And I, I guess I'm agreeing. Yeah. I think that's what I'm saying is it's got to heal.
So you'll leave, will, not change it to May?
I'm comfortable with that. Yep.
Okay. So. Okay, we're leaving it like it is then? Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to back up like that. Now I'm back to wherever we were on page twenty-six.
On page twenty-six, um. Bill had suggested in the third line from the bottom on the right. Changing or adding after the word debris.
Adding, adding.
The word yes.
Yes, yes, I agree with that. And I had a question, but, uh. In the block there, the wildfires and landslides, in the second paragraph, it says in western North Carolina, landslides and debris flows. After the wildfires in two thousand and sixteen caused. Millions of dollars up. When I first read it, I thought maybe that should be caused. Rather than cost. And I guess it's maybe split in the air, so.
Yes, I had that too. Change cost to caused. Okay, page twenty-seven.
Uh, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Chairman. On that same page twenty-six, in that block wildfires and it landslides. Underneath, that's the two pictures, there's a little caption underneath it, drone image showing. A and D example, that should be eight N. Example.
Okay.
Delete the D.
Oh, that's good. You and Bill Tucker are really on this. Okay.
Don't y'all want to serve on a plate and he's only, you hear me do this every meeting?
Twenty-seven. Twenty-nine. Twenty-eight. Twenty-nine. Thirty. Thirty-one. Thirty-two. Thirty-three. Thirty-four. Thirty-five. Now into the public engagement section three. Page thirty-eight. Page thirty-nine. Page forty. Page forty-one. Page forty-two. Page forty-three.
Mr. Chairman, the, my suggestion would be relating to the. First paragraph, top left. Oh, down six, seven, well, I guess starting at fifth line is a sentence.
What page, Dan?
I'm sorry, page forty-three. Beginning with the fifth line, there's a sentence began, since the survey did not ask participants whether or not they own property in Montreat. I suggest been a comma after Montreat. And I can tell if that, I, I marked it up, is that a capital I T?
No.
Okay, I, I, I circled it, so. I said, then it continues, it is unclear how many of the responses these policies were theoretical. Part-time dash, part-time residents not being affected by the policy but supporting the idea, dash. May, I think the word which should be inserted before the word may.
You've lost me.
So this.
This.
It's a long.
Which may partially explain, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so, so you insert the word which before may.
Okay.
So it reads, since the survey did not ask test whether or not they own property in Montreat, comma, it's unclear how many of the response these policies were theoretical. Which may partially explain.
Right. I'll have you with that. Okay. Anything else on forty-three? Forty-four. Forty-five. Um, I had a, excuse me, is that one? I got forty-eight. What's the forty-five? And I, I go to forty-eight, excuse me, I'm sorry. Um. In the last line of the narrative. Uh, in attempt to address some of the issues. Which Montreat may face. In the coming year.
Any issues with that?
Um, in the blocks. Of the environment development transportation. Of the environment development transportation and the narratives about each of them. The first one says, "Montreat values and protects." And second one says, "Montreat will be," the third one says, "will be sought." But we ought to make it. The first one would be the easiest to make it the same because we're talking about the future. Montreat will value and protect and make it consistent by. Um, forty-nine.
So is, is everyone on the commission okay with that? And then I'm gonna take, um, the S off the val- values and protects. So it'll read, "Montreat will value and protect," it's true.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Just makes them all three consistent, the, seeing it's future tense as opposed to. One of them being present.
In the objectives, we start on page forty-nine. I told the mayor the other day that I have one major objection to this whole thing. And that was that y'all assigned too much stuff to the planning and zoning.
It wasn't them, it was, it was me.
Oh, thank you, Kayla.
Yes. So I, as the council considers it, I, this is a, just a suggestion, it's not, we can't really. It's up to y'all, but if y'all might just think about some other committees or maybe even creating some committees to do some of this work. Is all that I would suggest.
Yeah, and, um, Bill, that, so a lot of these have to do with. Land use ordinances, which is why it came to planning and zoning. Um, but I think, you know, what we had talked about yesterday in the hillside development meeting about opening. Seeing if there's anything that would prevent planning and zoning from opening up subcommittee assignments to the general public. Rather than just people who are on planning and zoning, may, um.
That may soften that.
Distribute it, but I'm, I don't have an answer on that yet. So TBD, but that's something that we'll keep in mind.
You know, what we determine, the ordinance. Uh, require, the statute or the ordinance requires that any committee of a, of a commission. Consist only of members of that commission. So that really creates some burdens, plus it doesn't get the community involved, so. We'd ask the council to consider making a change in that. Ordinance, if it's a statute, we understand you can't change it. But that would be helpful to open those up, so.
And I, I hope to have an answer for y'all by your July meeting. So we can decide where we go from there with that.
So that's just a suggestion. That's really. Okay, uh, page fifty-two.
Um, I think we jumped past fifty and fifty-one.
I thought we were talking about fifty. Then, okay, anything on fifty? And fifty-one. Fifty-two. Fifty-three. Fifty-four.
Mr. Chairman, along the lines of what you were just discussing, and I don't want to add anything to that, I, I agree with the discussion y'all just had about. Maybe some other committees to take on some of these tasks. One just comment, it, an item ten there about talking about viewshed protections, which I support. It's my understanding that the town has the option at point of establishing a community appearance commission. Just a thought, just throw it out, uh, under the statute, which might be something that. Be involved in several of these items and the. That you've got assigned to P and Z and different committees, it might be, that's something to think about in the future, just throw that out.
Okay, um, fifty-five, I think is where we are.
I had a question on page fifty-five, in the first block at the top, in the M P D S M S four program, second paragraph. It reads, "An M S four is a system of conveyances owned by municipality." And I guess, I don't understand what that word conveyances means there, I'm. Used to conveyance mean deeds, and so itches and pipes, because that's what that is.
The conveyances means pipes.
I just didn't understand what it meant, that's, uh, it's not in my lingo.
I think it's infrastructure. It's an, it's an infrastructure system.
Conveyance to me is a deed conveying property, so that's just where I come from, my background, but I just did not know what that meant.
So, I think I heard Kayla say, "In this sport is an infrastructure system." Does that improve the banner?
Yeah, or just leave it as a system, change word conveyance to infrastructure.
We could just say an infrastructure system.
That would be more understandable to me, but that's, that's me.
Better, Kay? Is an infra- is an infrastructure system.
Owned by.
Owned by, okay. Okay, next is page fifty-six. Is there a hand back there? Oh, yes. That'd be fine. Here, great. Okay, fifty-seven. Fifty-eight.
One second, Mr. Chairman. On fifty-eight, I had a question. Maybe for clarification, the first paragraph, item number one there in transportation. Very last line talks about speed tables near the campus. Do we need to clarify what campus we're talking about? Is it the conference center's campus to college campus, or? I assume to mean college campus.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think these, these were just included as like ideas. So I mean, we could specify, we could leave it open, I don't. You know, I think ultimately what is done to meet this objective. I mean, that will be determined at the time that people sit down to actually examine it.
So you could strike near the campus, so that would just re. Uh, post advanced warning signs near Montreat Gate, seasonal speed. Tables. Or, say, or additional stop signs.
We could do that.
So, okay.
I like that.
Anyone have an issue with that? No, okay.
Yes, Tom. Were you, what number? So you're talking about number three, and implement? Oh, fifty-seven, I'm sorry.
Wasn't implemented, not implemented. Yeah, they'll flip it over. Yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Whitmer in adding something like, you know, to date, the plan has not been implemented.
But, but not implemented through.
I, I would just, I would just say, I mean, either at the end of the first paragraph or the second, just say, "To date, the plan has not been implemented." Where do you read that?
Where are you? What page are you on?
You okay, Richard?
Which paragraph? We're not adding anything to this. Okay.
No, I thought we were going to add it, dated it up and implemented.
I, I didn't understand that.
On page fifty-seven.
So I, I, I had proposed, so we're on page fifty-seven, on the wayfinding signage plan, additional planning document box. I had suggested adding either to the end of the first paragraph or second paragraph, "To date, this plan has not been implemented." I don't know, Richard, where did you see that? Okay. So which par- So, do you want to add?
Yes, I, I was thinking.
To which paragraph?
You could add it as an extra line just at the bottom.
Extra line.
References both of those paragraphs.
Yeah. "To date, this plan has not been implemented."
Okay. Page fifty-eight. You saying on fifty-eight?
Well, we made that one change, right, deleting near the campus.
Yes. Unless anybody has an issue with that.
Okay, page fifty-nine. Page sixty-one. Page sixty-two, and the rest of it is.
Yeah, so the rest of this is appendix, so this all. Is all, these are materials as they exist that were distributed to the community, so. Um, that's not what you just.
Okay, um. Are y'all happy with this? Did you, I don't think you need to read it back.
I'd like to, just for the record, just to make sure I didn't miss anything. All right.
Before we do that, we had a comment. Yes.
Bill, I'd like to finish the planning and zonings and then have the public come up after. Just to make sure I've, and then if you guys want to take their comments and incorporate it, it's fine, but I'd like to get what you guys have decided. Okay, so on the executive summary, in the first paragraph, last line, we removed ship from township. And the first sentence of the second paragraph of the executive summary, we added in parentheses, "As reapproved in two thousand twenty-two." Between plan and the word and. In the last sentence, we, of that second paragraph that starts with during this time. We removed the, um, comma after plan. And added a comma after surveys, and then replaced the word contextual with appropriate. And then on the second page of the executive summary. We added, um, lowercase Roman numerals, one, two, and three in front of each of the, um, vision categories. And then, um, we are requesting to make the and in between preservation and stormwater italicized. And then unintallicize the and between stormwater and traffic. Okay, um, on page six, under a community context, in the second paragraph. We are, um, removing the first sentence. That starts with founded in nineteen oh five and, and ends with general assembly and replacing it with. Prior to incorporation, the area of the town was owned by the Mountain Retreat Association. In parentheses, M R A, commonly referred to as the Montreat Conference Center. Period, in nineteen sixty-seven, the town of Montreat was officially incorporated through the North Carolina General Assembly. Um, on the paragraph on that same page, the second paragraph on the right-hand column. That last sentence, we are revising that sentence to read, "The town is governed by a council manager form of government." Um, page seven, uh, left-hand column, first paragraph. We are putting a paragraph after small private Christian college. And adding a new sentence that says, "Montreat also attracts outdoor enthusiasts, dot, dot, dot." So we could add at the end of, um, the new sentence that reads, "Prior to incorporation, the area of the town was owned by. The M R A commonly referred to as the Mount, as the, yeah, Montreat. Conference." Just after that, after center. Okay, so it'll read then. Prior to incorporation, the area of the town was owned by the M R A, commonly referred to as the. Okay. Is it the way it's written right now? Right, so.
That, it's just the reverse of that.
Right, so, so right now, right now it says, founded in nineteen oh five by the Montreat Conference. Right, right, so what I was replacing it with is that the town was owned by the M R A. Commonly referred to as. Right. No, no, I'm, I'm just, while we're talking, I'm just trying to expedite, yeah. So the area of the town was owned by the Mountain Tree Association, in parentheses, M R A. Commonly referred to as the Montreat Conference. Right, founded in eighteen ninety-seven. So is, is the Planning and Zoning Commission then, okay, if we revise that sentence to read. Prior to incorporation, the area of the town was owned by the Mountain Tree Association, in parentheses, M R A, founded in eighteen ninety-seven?
Yeah, we, we're gonna drop that. Okay, sure.
Okay, so that sentence then is going to read, prior to incorporation, the area of the town was owned by the Mountain Tree Association. In parentheses, M R A, founded in eighteen ninety-seven. Period, in nineteen sixty-seven, the town of Montreat was officially incorporated. Okay, um, so going on to page seven, um. Oh, I read that comment already, so I'm not gonna read that one again. Okay, going on to page ten, in the left-hand column, in the second to last sentence. Replacing twenty-ten with twenty-thirteen in reference to figure two-four.
Actually, I may have said thirteen, but if I look at the chart, the inflection point is actually two thousand and twelve.
Okay, so tw- twelve instead of thirteen. Uh, next column on the right-hand side, in that first full sentence that starts with, "It is believed." We're taking out, "It is believed," and capitalizing the T in there, so the sentence reads, "There are approximately six hundred residences, dot, dot, dot." Um, about halfway down that paragraph, in between, um. Where the word anecdotal is. Page ten. Page ten, right-hand column, about halfway down that paragraph, there's the word anecdotal with the A capitalized. We're gonna put a period before the word anecdotal. And then in the second to last sentence in that paragraph, the sentence reads, "A growing population." We're going to add an S onto strain, so it reads, "A growing population in a small town can cause strains on transportation networks, dot, dot, dot." All right, um, page eleven, um, on the right-hand. Column, under housing, uh, in the second sentence, we're gonna replace slower with more slowly. And add the word in between van and D, so home values are rising more slowly in Montreat than in the county and state. And then we're going to change figure two-six to more contrasting colors. Um, with the maps on, with figure two-seven. We are going to ask if the consultants who prepared these maps, if they can delineate between improved and unimproved lots. And then those that are improved, whether they're, um, owned by full-time or part-time residents. Um, and if this can't. Um, and if this can't be accomplished, then to just remove the maps. All right, um.
If that, if you do that, then you're going to have to renumber.
Yeah, and that'll, that's fine. Um, figure two-eight, we're going to ask the consultants for clarification on what exactly bike suitable is, how that was determined, if that references a plan, um, what it means in this context. If that information is not available, then we'll remove this piece of the data set from figure two-eight um, and leave the rest of the map. And we'll also revise the last sentence on page seventeen to read the roads within the municipal boundary of Monterey are generally considered bike suitable and bike friendly. So.
Okay, well, referring to all these figures, figure two, eight, nine, ten, blah, blah, blah. That would also change in the narrative, so I'm hoping that you can find a way to leave that one map in.
If it, if it does, it's.
Yeah.
It's, um.
There's a way to.
If it, if it changes it, if, you know, rather it be accurate and representative and, yeah, that's not a, it's not an issue to change the names in there, yeah. Um, or the, the numbering system. All right, page seventeen.
Uh, one, one question on page sixteen is I just look at it again.
Yeah.
Should, in the very first sentence, should town be capitalized as the specific legal name, the town of Monterey or?
I don't think so. I think if the, the steering committee had said that town should not be capitalized, but Dr. Mauer, Richard, John. We're on page sixteen, um, left-hand side, first sentence, the T in town. Okay. Okay, um, page seventeen on figure two-nine, um, we're going to request that other institu-, other institutions be called out in their own category on this pie chart in addition to the MRA and Monterey College. Um, on the paragraph on the left-hand side, second sentence, we're getting rid of high value and capitalizing the R in recreation. Yes. Oh, no, I was only. Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, so I was only saying to replace the last, the last two sentences, um, but I guess we'd also strike and bike suitable.
We just take that.
Depending on what we do, yeah.
Actually, the map explains it, so do we even need this sentence? Need on, um, right, page seventeen recreational uses, um, that Julie just brought up. The map also shows the sidewalks and bike suitable roads in Monterey. Would we just scratch that sentence?
You could, if you wanted to. Just get rid of it. Okay. Okay, so now on page seventeen, on the left-hand column under recreational uses, the sentence that is about midway through the paragraph starts with the map also shows, we're going to remove that entire sentence.
I, I don't want to split hairs here, but this whole paragraph is pointing out what's on the map, so why not just delete the part about bike suitable roads if that's what you have to do with bikes and roads? I mean, it does still show sidewalks. And it talks about it in this paragraph. I, I would just suggest just delete and bike suitable roads if that's what you end up doing based on your research.
I'll leave that to you guys, whether you want to delete the whole sentence now or just take out and bike suitable roads, depending on what happens with figure two-eight.
I mean, it starts off saying figure two-eight on previous page shows the existing trails, so that's repetitive too, if you're just relying on the map. And then it also says the map also shows the sidewalks in Monterey, there's one sidewalk along Assembly Drive, blah, blah, blah. So it's, it seems to me this paragraph is kind of interpreting the map, so I don't see why we need to delete the whole sentence, just the part dealing with bike suitable roads is the only part that needs to be deleted from the paragraph, it seems to me.
Julie, what do you think about that?
I, I definitely want to strike and bike suitable roads because I, I just think that we're going to pivot away from that concept. I mean, Liz, would you be okay if we kept the rest? The map also shows the sidewalks in Monterey.
Okay, so. Are we taking out bike suitable regardless of what happens with figure two-eight, or is that, are we removing and bike suitable roads if figure two, if the bike suitable road is deleted from that? I, I want to take it out now or wait?
I just have, I, I don't under-, because I think of people that are looking for things to do in Monterey and there might be some Google something that if you put in bike suitable roads, it'll come up and just show Virginia and West Virginia. And that, I think that's what I'm struggling with. Like, why did they pick out those roads? And even if they did.
Well, and again, we don't have the answer to that, like, right now.
Mm-hmm.
And so if we don't have an answer to it.
Liz, you're, you're saying even if we get the answer, are we going to be satisfied with it?
I, yeah, I guess just living here, I think Monterey's generally friendly to bicyclists within the community.
On the, on our roads. That I guess that.
Generally.
Right, so that was only going to be added in if figure two-eight, if we were removing, yeah. Do, I mean, we can just say, you know, we don't agree with this. Do any committee members have a thought on that?
Bike suitable roads meaning not the condition of the road, not the position of the plant.
Mm-hmm.
The only practice. It got. Prable.
Mm-hmm.
Now, can you get up a review? Can you get up a look at?
Mm-hmm.
Bike suitable or not? When I'm around speaking.
I agree.
So then.
Did, and did the, um.
Consultant.
Thank you. I was looking for that word. Um, they, they came up with this paragraph and I think we live here.
And I don't, I don't think that they came up with this. Like, I don't think that they were the ones who determined bike suitability. I was under the impression they got that from somewhere else.
Okay.
And they weren't able to provide me with, like, the justification on it.
Yeah, I guess I'm just kind of wanting more of a Monterey feel to the language. Does that make sense?
Well, I mean, then, you know, if, if.
Speaking as someone that Googles stuff to go do activities.
Well, then why don't we just take it out of the, out of the, um, out of figure two-eight and then just replace that paragraph and have it be general.
Maybe Monterey roads are generally.
Right, so take out.
Yeah.
Take out bike suitable from the map. And then replace and then add in before start crossing things off on my. Does anyone have an issue with that?
Make sure I understand. So you're not going to do any research, whatever you would have found. We're, we're saying we're just going to remove the the part from the map and the language of a bike suitable roads from the paragraph.
If that's what you guys want to do.
I'm.
Yeah, and, and talk about it, excess, generally.
Yeah, put, and put back in some language about a general statement about bike friendly, bike suitable. Yes, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so we're going to remove bike suitable from the map. The rest of the map's going to stay the same.
Okay.
And then under this recreational use paragraph, starting with the sentence, figure two-eight, this is page seventeen, figure two-eight on the previous page shows the existing trails in Monterey and the ETJ. The map also shows the sidewalks in Monterey. There is one sidewalk along Assembly Drive that goes from Monterey Great Gate to the Town Center and Lookout Road. The roads within the municipal boundary of Monterey are generally considered to be bike suitable and bike friendly. Yeah.
That's good.
We're good?
Very good.
Okay. All right, let me just, um. Okay. Okay, so we're going to keep going. Page twenty.
On, on eighteen and nineteen, as I'm looking at these maps again, maybe it's just my eyes, but does the crosshatch town center overlay actually exist on these two maps?
Yeah.
I'm just not seeing it.
Yeah, it's, it's a little difficult to see, um, but it is on there.
Okay, I mean, I think.
You can see it, you can see it more clear on, um, page nineteen. It basically is over. If you look where Lake Susan is, it, it's over those properties. Are you, uh, that's not the right map? Yeah, it's that one.
Okay, it's faint, but I'll take your word for it.
It's, yeah, it's, it's on there, um. Yeah.
Okay, you okay, Bill?
Sure.
Okay.
Better glass.
Yeah. Okay, page twenty-two on the right-hand side, um, last sentence, E, EJT, ETJ. Um, page twenty-five on left-hand side, first paragraph, second sentence, changing conception to inception. Uh, second paragraph, first sentence, oh, just kidding, we're not making a change there. Is that rid of that one?
One there. Did you, did you?
We're not going to change.
Oh, that's.
Will to May, we're leaving that the way it is. Um, page twenty-six, right-hand side. Um, third line from the bottom, we're adding the word is between debris and likely. And then in the wildfires and landslide box in the second paragraph, uh, first sentence, cost, we're going to change that to caused. And then in the second image, that's the drone image, the fourth word in that description should be and, A-N, not and. Okay, page forty-three, left-hand side, uh, first paragraph. In the first full sentence that starts with since the survey, we're going to add a comma between Monterey and the word it. And then, um, on the second line from the bottom in that same sentence, same paragraph, we're adding the word which in front of May. And then page forty-eight on the right-hand column in the la-, second to last line of that paragraph, we're going to add the word which in between issues and Monterey and replace four Cs with may face. So the end of that paragraph reads some of the issues which Monterey may face in the coming years. In the first vision statement for environment, we're adding the word will, Monterey will, and taking off the S from values and protect so that the vision statement reads Monterey will value and protect its tree canopy, streams, land, and natural beauty. Okay, and then on page fifty-five, under the NPDES MS four program, in the second paragraph, we're going to, um, replace a system of conveyances with an infrastructure system. So it reads an MS four is an infrastructure system owned by, dot, dot, dot. And then page fifty-seven, in that way finding signage plan box, we're going to add a new sentence at the very end that says to date, this plan has not been implemented. On page fifty-eight and the first objective on the last line, we're getting, we're going to strike near the campus, the text that follows speed tables so that it reads seasonal speed tables or additional stop signs. And I believe that's it.
Okay.
Did I get, did I get everything?
You did.
Very good.
Okay.
Okay, Powell, uh, we'll recognize Powell Jones at this point. If you'd like to come forward and use the microphone. Yeah.
So, Bill, what I'm going to do is I have y'all's comments. If you guys want to incorporate any of the comments from the public, you can. Um, but remember, you guys are making a recommendation as the advisory board. So you can choose to just have them bring their comments to the board commissioners, or you can choose to incorporate them.
We'll let him speak and see what he wants to say.
Right. I'm, I'm just saying generally.
He'll probably need to go back to the board of commissioners also. Out.
Thank you, Chairman and Board of Planning and Zoning. I'm Powell Jones, I'm a property owner of four twenty-one Appalachian Way. And first of all, just really thank you for your service, not only today, but what you do uh, in serving, uh, all Montreeters. And also a thank you to the mayor and the town council for what they do, your love for Monterey, uh, how you care about this beautiful place and your service to us, the citizens. The public received this draft yesterday, and I know I've made one pass through it. Um, and just would like to give some feedback. I'm going to refer you to page fifty-six and fifty-seven in just a second. But broadly, I'd like to thank the town leadership for their efforts in getting the comprehensive plan up to date through this process. Um, many town of Monterey citizens, um, have learned just in the last few years how crucial this document will be to protect the Monterey as we know it from development threats and pressures that impact communities across our great country. Comprehensive plan is essential. And I probably, I understand that better. Um, so thanks to the Comp Plan Steering Committee, many of them are represented in the audience today for your important work on this plan. You love Monterey, and if you have given your time, energy, and creativity in this process, thank you. I was given the opportunity to participate in one of the many listening sessions last summer, and the clear guidance I heard from that group of community members, which happened to be mostly ladies, me and one other guy in the room that particular day, was to be certain that the Comp Plan helped to guard development in Monterey from disrupting the natural beauty, from changing the charm that comes with many historical structures, protect from having development focused on increasing tourism, or changes that further magnify traffic and safety issues. And this plan appears to reflect that sentiment. However, we all know that interpretation of the plan is, is the key for what the plan really means. And, and that's what I'd like to comment on. I'd like to encourage those in town leadership, including the town council, the planning and zoning boards now and in the future, and the board of adjustment now and the future to reference Comp Plan Development Section, page fifty-six, fifty-seven, uh, labeled in the next step section, item four. So on page fifty-six, item four, preserve, protect, and enhance the character of Monterey by evaluating and improving existing allowable uses, densities, and dimensional regulations in each zone in the district. So just the interpretation here is going to be crucial for the future, to preserve the other things that are part of the plan. And then in number seven, same section, but on page fifty-seven, in the spirit of the long-term success for the town of Monterey, work collaborated with the institutions of the town, including but limited to Monterey College and the Mountain Retreat Association on any future development plans to support the vitality and future of the institutions and the town. Very important statement. This, the, the citizens need to be certain that the plan, if approved as written, will be interpreted with consistency with the sentiments expressed across the entire plan. That's a big statement. Our two largest institutions in the community, MRA and Monterey College, need to be viable organizations for the long term. Part of what makes Monterey unique is their core priorities of developing followers of Jesus Christ. And the safe community that we have is centered on that priority, and those that come here uh, are, are the kind of people that have helped make Monterey special. So those organizations are essential and they need to be viable, and they need to pivot over the long term. And both have examples in their past of being great stewards uh, in many ways of this community and including of their historical buildings. The college successfully renovated and made great use of an older building a year ago. Can't remember the name. I know it's a Scottish name, McCall, McCall Building, but I'm not, I'm not sure, but they did a fantastic job, and it's a great example of using an existing building. MRA's tasteful renovation of Assembly Inn a decade ago, another great example of using what we have. But as items four and seven in the next step section are interpreted, it's incumbent on those key institutions to be transparent and open in communications with the full cross-section of the community to gain input, to navigate, to meet their growth needs, but in complementary ways. And if they can have those conversations in the summer mind, when Monterey's full consistency is included, a win-win is obtainable in this way. I'd also like to point out that they've given us, um, some great examples of cooperation between the two organizations in recent years. Perhaps some of the added lodging needs of both could be best met by working together and in this way have a better complementary fit for Monterey overall. The manner in which these two sections and other parts of the Comp Plan, including the sections On protecting historical buildings, how that's interpreted is the elephant in the room for a lot of people. And is crucial to our maintaining Montreal for those generations to follow us. Thanks again for your hard work on this updated plan and for the opportunity to comment this morning. It looks like a great job it's been done. Um, but again, the interpretation will continue. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Paul. I'd encourage you to speak with the mayor about speaking at one of those other meetings too. Yeah, thank you, Paul. I've got a proposed motion for us, that Kayla.
Were there, were there any other comments that anyone wanted to make? If you guys can just come up, state your name and address.
Yeah, I'm Ken Shortridge, I have homes on Upper Mississippi and. Recently moved from Charleston, so my comments are obviously gonna be about. Not only do we preserve our buildings.
Would you, would you raise your mic a little bit? And could you state your address?
Well, my address is, my address is.
Thank you.
A very talented mayor.
First of all, I want to thank you all for your efforts, both what you do and what the committees have done behind us, but. Recently, last year, your planning and zoning committee and its review of the town documents made. Explicit reference to preserving historic structures. They stated that this should not be included in the zoning ordinance. And they felt that a reference to the comprehensive plan was sufficient. And then you said, we are exploring this question further and may revert with further information. So I, I reviewed the new comprehensive plan and found the only reference to historic structures was the following. Montreal will be a community that respects buildings with historic value, encourages new development. To consider the surrounding architecture and strives for resilience in the face of a changing climate. My question is, what does that mean? The present plan has no proposals or recommendations as the previous plan had for protecting our historic homes or buildings. Is this all that we have to recommend for the future protection of our hundred and twelve homes? That were built before nineteen seventeen and all those that were built thereafter. These are what makes Montreal special, even the buildings. We are presently, the building we're presently in was designed with this in mind, or we could have just built. You know, a metal building here, it's our town hall. So my question is, why didn't the new plan recommend and carry over the proposals of the previous plan? Or have we changed our mind about historic and architectural integrity in Montreal, which I know is not true. Presently, any historic home or building in Montreal can be altered or torn down.
I can, I can answer that, Bill. So the steering committee, um, voted to not include. A, so let me just give a little bit of explanation on how like historic. How basically architectural controls work in North Carolina. So in North Carolina, you have to have a, um, designated historic district. Um, to enforce, is this wrong, Ben? Am I? Right, I'm saying, yeah, the overarching architectural controls for residential structures, which is what would be primary, which is what Montreal mostly is. Um, requires the, you, you, like Ben said, you can have an individual structure designated in search structure, but overall. Um, you would be looking at establishing a, a historic district architectural controls. It includes a, a study. Someone has to come in and actually inventory all of the building's architecture. Yeah, so. Right, so, so that's just a little bit of, of explanation as far as the process goes, just in general. We discussed this as, as the steering committee and the steering committee voted to remove. Exploring establishing a historic district from, from the plan. And the steering committee can, can speak on that or, or correct me if, if I'm off base, but that's what I believe our, our discussions had, had led to. Um, because of the burden that it was placing, it would have placed on, on homeowners, but I'll let them speak if they.
Mr. Mayor, you want to speak?
Or enforce the control.
But the bottom line is I heard it is that you can cast and they'll work with you to get it done. Let's make a note, or if y'all are okay, that we just asked the, um, council to.
Yeah.
Consider the concerns about the store.
I, I agree. Yeah, and I mean, I would, I would just encourage the. You know, you to come to the board commissioners meeting and, and share that too, because planning and zoning is just advisory, but yeah. Yeah, it's an, yeah, we have to be an initiative. Well, yeah, and so I would, like I said, I'd encourage you to come to board commissioners and, and share that and, you know, um, make sure that they, they hear that too.
Well, this is in the whole town council.
Yeah, and this is just an advisory. All right, if there's, is there any other?
Any other public comments?
I'm, I'm Brad Hester, I live in one ninety-two Mississippi Road. And I'm the chair of the tree board. I, I see that there is an item including their designating. Tree board to, I, I forget the language and, and I was looking for the page and I couldn't find it on my cell phone just now, but. Designating tree board to cooperate with, um. M R A and the college and a couple of other entities within the town. On a variety of things, it's, it's, it's an activity that I think is important. And I would really like to see the tree board involved in that. It's something that I didn't think we had. As things have stood, didn't have the authorization to, to, on our own. Reach out to the different entities on these, on those kinds of issues. However, as I, as I look at it now, I also realize that this might require rewriting the. The tree board, uh. The, the tree plan for, for that. And so I just wanted to serve notice on that, that, that the, the board would need to do some work and. Making sure that those, those are consistent with the assigned task of the tree one.
That's a good point. And just so everybody knows, Brad was talking about objective two under the environment. The tree board shall collaborate with existing stakeholders and their representatives to identify and recommend. To town council strategies for protection of our forests and for its health and resiliency and to propose funding required for such strategies.
And again, I'd encourage you to, to come before the council to their public hearings. And say, at one or the other, because that'd be helpful. Any other comments? Are you ready to proceed? I've got a, Kayla and I sort of worked on a motion. And, um, the suggested. Motion is that we recommend, if the planning and zoning commission recommend. Approval with revisions. Or corrections, uh, of the comprehensive plan to the board commissioner, subject to additional public engagement. Uh, as provided in the public hearings, uh, to be, um, convened in July and August. And that's the motion, did I get that right?
So, yeah, so, uh, subject to additional public engagement at the July and August. Board of Commissioners meetings with the plan being, um, with the revised version of, of the plan, with planning and zoning's comments being posted. On the town website on, on June twenty-ninth.
Oh, yeah, then she'll post that, she can't do that until the corrections get made.
Yeah.
What, what were the dates, June?
June twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
It'll be posted.
And that, you know, the town council meeting is July fourteenth, so that's over two weeks to show up there.
So would you just repeat? I just want to make sure we understand how the calendar would work. As to these refinements that we've recommended, and that's assuming that we vote and we all approve them. So those refinements will be made and, and then we anticipate the comp plan would be reposted when?
Uh, July twenty-ninth.
June.
Or June, excuse me, June twenty-ninth.
Okay, so it's up, it was up, I guess yesterday or whenever it was posted.
That would be the version y'all are looking at today.
Right, but just to reiterate, so the public has had the chance to see a, a very short period of time. To get to today. It will be refined and reposted on or about June twenty-ninth. Um, the public can make comment, I mean, as they are today.
Yeah, at the, at the July Board of Commissioners meeting.
And then there will be two public forums at the. Board of Commissioners meeting, which is the first Thursday and.
July fourteenth.
That's what I'm trying to get to, because I think it's really important that the community understand what their opportunities are to give comment. Right, exactly.
But, and those public forums will not be limited in thirty minutes. These are specific private forums.
Uh, the agreement, uh, that, uh, we came to was that the public forum would continue to be thirty minutes with give and take. However, at the July, uh, uh, council meeting, there will be a public hearing. Which is a formal part of the agenda of the actual council meeting. Uh, where, uh, individuals can speak and provide input into it, uh, in, into the plan. Uh, there will be no action taken by the council at that meeting on the plan. A month later, in August, uh, we will have, uh, the council meeting. And at that council meeting will be a second public hearing, uh, during the meeting itself. But again, as usual, during the public forum, prior to the meeting, there will be a give and take. Uh, time of thirty minutes, but the public hearings will have no time limits. Um, except for a, a three-minute limit, uh, per speaker.
And there will be questions and answers available during.
Not during the public hearing. That's correct. It'll just be, uh, input. Um, but of course, there's sixty days between now and then, uh, that individuals who have access as of yesterday. To the plan with the, um, minimal changes that are being taken, uh, were taken today. Will have comment time to write to commissioners, um, to, regarding their thoughts. And we will certainly get back to them on that. And, uh, at the end of, uh, the public hearing, uh, an agenda item will be for the council to accept. Uh, or to take action on the plan.
At the August meeting.
Uh, at the August meeting, that's correct.
So, Bill, I would just amend your most emotion if we're ready. Um, I just have one question.
Because I know there are community members that are not tech savvy. Is it possible to have written copies available at town hall?
If they wanna come by and get them, yeah, they can.
There's a fee for that.
Okay.
Uh, I can't remember what that fee is.
I, I don't know if this is possible or not, but could there be copies at the post office? Is that appropriate? No? Well, okay. What if someone donated to have some credit? I'm just asking if it's appropriate. My heart is that as many people as possible have access to look at the document.
We, we agree with that, but, uh, you know, with the downloadable version, um, as well as the, uh, the town hall being open. Uh, from eight to five, five days a week, it should be adequate, I would think.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Whitmer. Okay, would you like to reread?
Yes, I'd just say, I'd just suggest the motion approval with revision, subject to additional public engagement. I would just say per the board of commissioners with the plan to be revised plan to be posted on the twenty-ninth.
I, I very much appreciate the work to make sure that there are public forums. If it's not a requirement, it is a really strong recommendation to have that six. Uh, what is effectively a sixty-day comment period, I think is just critical.
Yeah.
Well, it is a requirement under the, it's this, that y'all have to have a public hearing.
Yeah.
Right, but I think the, the holding two is.
Sure.
Greatly appreciated and I think.
Yeah.
Absolutely critical for a comp plan that's gonna be in place for ten years. I agree.
Okay, y'all ready to vote on that motion? So, um, I guess someone needs to make the motion as read by Kayla, someone to make the motion.
I'll make the motion, I'll restate it slightly. I move that the planning and zoning commission recommend to the town council approval of the. Comprehensive plan has developed out of steering committee. With the revisions that we have discussed and approved here today. Then we also recommend to them that they have two public hearings as has been delineated here today. To consider, uh, input from the family.
Been moved to second, is there any discussion? And I guess, uh, Bill, you can't vote on it. And I think everybody else is here, Wade has been uncommonly silent. Before we get the chance to talk, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion passes. Is there any other business?
Yeah. So, um, with your recommendation to the board, um, I typed up this. Letter, just kind of summarizing it, it'll have all your revisions on it. Um, so that it just, you know, we have kind of a tracking document of, of what was, we did the same thing for the steering committee. So, um, that was included in y'all's packets, um, because I didn't know if anyone had any comments on this. I haven't seen them. You haven't seen this, okay?
Why don't you, would you just circulate that back and let's get our comments back in pretty quickly, but you're gonna wait till the plan gets rebuilt.
So I'm gonna give all of this to the board of commissioners at their July fourteenth meeting. The plan is individually going to be posted online. This is just something. Yeah, I, if there are any like content changes to the letter. Will need to do it in a public meeting. If it's just grammatical, then I don't mind doing it over. Over, it's the letter basically just summarizes that. You know, the, the plan was adopted in two thousand eight. The town selected a consultant to revise the plan. It basically just summarizes the process. And it also will include the list of recommendations written out so that we know what, what the. Planning and zoning commissions, um, recommendation was accompanied by. Yeah, and it's like in the letter.
All right, well, can y'all do your best to get any, number one, Kayla's gonna recirculate that.
Yeah.
Each of us, but you know.
I'm still confused, who's the letter from and to?
It's from you guys to the board of commissioners.
Cover letter.
Essentially, basically, yeah. And it'll, and it, and it will have the list of your recommended changes because you guys recommended approval with revision, not just approval. Which is, which is, is fine, but you know, just so that we have a record in, in the minutes of what those. Which is, which is, is fine, but you know, just so that we have a record in, in the minutes of what those changes were. Um, yeah.
Okay.
Well, we're gonna
Recognize that motion. We, we, I just want to encourage people to get your, you're gonna circulate.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to you guys via email and we'll kind of decide how to go from there.
And let's, let's get it to her by
I'll, I'll set a date.
Okay. Not one day.
No.
Okay, now, uh, Mr. Burns, you have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all very much and thank y'all, and thanks to the Comp Plan Committee, and y'all did a great job.
Yeah.